Are you ready, Jim? Sorry. I should have checked. Eric, you ready? Chief, you ready? All right.
I'm just gonna cover the pieces.
We're not very nice to you, are we? Still haven't.
Are you guys making some last minute changes or something?
I told the other department heads they didn't have to be here for other, the other departments presenting. Eric still gets to be here.
Yeah, yeah.
Stephanie gets to be here, of course.
Rhonda's here.
Hi Rhonda.
Rhonda's getting intel.
Rhonda heard there was pizza.
How are you now?
I'm veggie one, there is.
Nick.
You don't like mushrooms?
Nick was, Nick is sick today and he was trying to check out if he needed to have someone else come in this place.
Yeah, we're live, guys. Thanks, Matt.
I didn't make him pick us up.
Okay, do I have to make any special work session? I don't make a work session announcement, do I? All right, this is work session and budget review for fiscal year 21, budget overview in Police Department.
So this is our first budget meeting and we're gonna be following essentially the same schedule that we've followed for the last several years. At least while I've been here. I think you probably did things a lot differently prior to that. I just don't know what it was. If you look at your, at your spots, you have a folder, binder, three room binder that has some paperwork in it. First couple of sheets, you've already seen in terms of the budget schedule. Meetings at 3:30 or 4:30 depending on the day. And then a budget calendar right behind it, some of the dates that are kind of important as we move through here. The biggest, biggest one of note within this schedule, the January 31, February 3rd timeframe. We do run a fairly tight schedule for being able to get through and get a budget approved. Budget's not due until March 31st, but we have two public hearings that need to be set and held and those cannot overlap prior to that date. So backing up to get that accomplished gets us to having to really be finalized with what we're doing moving forward by the end of January. Behind that, you'll find the materials that we'll cover tonight. The budget presentation overview from myself, some general fund, basic numbers right immediately behind it. And then you'll see the, the budget numbers for the Police Department. I'm not sure if the chief may have another handout as, as he goes to do his presentation. Would encourage you to keep that with your other materials. And as we move through the upcoming meetings, would encourage you to keep, bring these binders back. Each night, we will have additional sheets to go in here. Next week on Monday, we'll have the capital improvement plan, hotel motel tax, local option sales tax, and, and the Fire Department to go with this. And then Thursday next week will be Don with the sanitary sewer, solid waste departments. And Eric, Rhonda, when are you, are you on next Thursday too? And then Eric the following week and Nick the week after that. So we'll gain more materials as you go through this binder. We wanna make sure that we can get, that we're getting a basic set of materials to all of you so that you all at least have the same basic information. I assume that the majority of the departments will be presenting some additional information besides just the numbers as part of their presentation. And as you have any questions, please let us know. We don't have stuff updated on the website as of yet. Maybe by next Thursday, I'm not, that's gonna be at the earliest. We will be in a position to have the, within the, the budget software that we have online, OpenGov. We'll have numbers on by then, but that's next Thursday at the earliest. That's, we're waiting for Annette to get back to get that stuff in. And she hasn't had a chance to do anything, given that I didn't finish making changes in the CIP until probably yesterday. All right, so budget presentation overview. Similar to previous years, as you look at that six page outline, the first bullet point is about goals of the budget. We have some basic goals to try to hit. Timely communication of issues in a fair and open manner. Trying to balance needs of all community members, which is not easy because we've got requests that run the gamut and you cannot fund all of them. Ensure we maintain compliance with requirements imposed on us from a state and federal level. Ensure that we honor all contracts and agreements previously agreed to. Only have deficit account balances occur in projects that are not complete with a plan for eliminating them at project completion. That goal really was, came out of being at a point where we had $8 million of deficit accounts a few years ago. And working towards a policy of not having that occur in the future. Maintain cash balance in general fund at 15% as recommended in financial management policies and by rating agencies. Rating agencies would see that 15% as really a baseline for what we should be at. When we went through our last ratings review with Moody's, I think it was Moody's and not S&amp;P. One of the issues that they highlighted for why we weren't in line to be able to move up a step was we were still under that 15%. Maintain our core services is another goal of the budget. Ensure that employees receive adequate training to perform their duties correctly and safely. Ensure equipment is replaced on a reasonable schedule to achieve adequate balance between upfront purchases, ongoing maintenance costs, safety for personnel, and reasonable in-service needs. Place a priority of maintaining existing equipment, facilities, or infrastructure before prioritizing new additional facilities. Our goal has been to bring on new capital projects funded by debt service in a manner that allows debt issues to be paid for in a consistent manner, not backloaded. Our debt still contains backloaded debt. And we had a plateau that went to 2023 that was established in 2012 with a debt issue at that time. We've since tried to work through that, but we still have done some level of backloading on some of our debt issues. Our goal is that by the time we hit that 2023 period, that we haven't taken on debt in a way that compromises our ability to do a well-structured, laddered debt that pays off principal every year. Where was I in that? So ensure that annual usage of debt falls within a planned ladder of issues that keeps us from violating our usage of our debt capacity. We try not to use more than, our financial policies say that we won't use more than 70% of our legally allowed debt usage. So that we maintain that 30% for something that we had not planned for that might come up. That we don't do something that threatens our ability to issue future debt or place our debt levy at too high of a property tax level. The budget that's presented is based on a current debt service levy of $3.80, which it's been for the last, I don't know, five, six years. With a long-term goal to see an average new debt issuance funded by property taxes be in the, I have in here one and a half to 2 million, we're probably closer to consistent 2 million level funded by a $3 property tax asking. We'll have to get to at least fiscal year 23 before we can begin transitioning to that reduced level due to backloading of previous debt issues. The five-year capital improvement plan, the CIP, as it's gonna be presented, has just shy of $11 million of GO, general obligation debt-funded projects, all but 800,000 of which is for street projects. So what's changed in the last year from last budget cycle to this cycle? Well, we had, we knew that ground emergency medical transport, GEMT, was going to be implemented last year. It's been implemented. We still haven't seen a payment on it. Hopefully, before we get to the end of the year, we will see it. We based this existing year's budget on the idea that we would receive $350,000. Maybe it's a little lower, maybe it's only $250,000 from that this fiscal year. Given that we haven't received any, we have a major potential issue in the existing budget cycle if that doesn't come about. Now, everything we hear is that they will be paying back to the beginning of our fiscal year, back to last July 1. If they don't, that is a major issue. This next year's budget that we're presenting is based on that being, providing us with $400,000 of funding. It's one of the few numbers that's in our budget that we don't really know for sure what's going on. When, we know that the legislation's in place, but we, when you haven't seen a payment structure start yet, it leaves you operating a lot on faith. The nice thing about the GEMT, that funding came very, at a very opportune time as our, the safer grant funding that we had for ambulance personnel. As that's winding down significantly less this year, we'll only get about $50,000 for that next year. The GEMT has come in and really done a good job of replacing the majority of the grant funding that we were receiving for those, those ambulance positions. We've transitioned our charge to the CTAA and I, it's one of the few initials that I didn't write out. It's the county, the combined township ambulance, city township ambulance authority association. City township, yeah, ambulance association. We changed that from basing reimbursement to the city on a base, on a per-call basis for the different entities to cover the net loss for the ambulance fund to being a per capita fee. It's not a, the end result is that the amount that we're receiving isn't significantly different than what it was before, but it is one that is now something that everyone can account for. It, it will, it's going, it'll stair-step up from the current year that we're in being a baseline. Next year will be a little bit higher, about $55,000. And then it's, in fiscal year 22, we'll go up another eight or nine thousand, I think. And then plateau there for the life of those agreements, which is, I think, five years before it's under reconsideration. But that's a better funding stream for us. That change has been built into this budget. Several revenue streams, specifically local option sales tax and hotel motel tax have rebounded after having a two-year downturn. We've seen about a 5% increase in local option sales tax revenues from FY19 actual received to the FY21 budgeted. And also a 10% increase in hotel motel from what we actually received in fiscal year 19 to what we are budgeting for fiscal 21. However, required support for the Recplex and golf course for operations has increased significantly. The Recplex has historically required ongoing support to fund its operations. And about, for seven or eight years, it was about $40,000 annually. The operational loss, though, began to increase about fiscal 17. We saw that go to $60,000 in that year, $100,000 in fiscal 18, $130,000 in 19. And we're budgeting 100, needing to transfer $160,000 over in fiscal 21. The golf course has seen some similar issues. We weren't having to subsidize operations at the golf course, similar to the Recplex. We were covering a lot of capital equipment, capital expenditures for both the Recplex and the golf course out of hotel motel, but operationally, it was cash flowing. However, in 2018, we saw it lose $10,000. 2019, it was $42,000. And we're budgeting in 21 and moving forward that we're at about a $55,000 loss there to maintain our golf course. Those are both covered by hotel motel taxes. We've seen an increasing share of hotel motel revenues being used to support ongoing operations for these entities. Ongoing commitments from the hotel motel tax account for $860,000 of the $925,000 projected revenues in FY21. It's very little that's left to do capital expenditures that have historically gone on there. We've been able to fund a lot of capital costs for trails or park and rec-type activities out of there. And there's very little that we're able to do anymore. All right, where was I on that? So Eric, you get to cover a lot of the usage dynamics that have impacted both the golf course and the Recplex. When he does his presentation, and you'll probably have questions to ask as he does that. A lot of that, at the Recplex specifically, has been a reduction in league participation during the week. The tournaments have stayed fairly consistent. The Recplex has been operated as a community amenity rather than with an effort to price itself as trying to cover its costs the way a private sector structure would. The recent agreement with CESA is an example of this, where we've made a mutually beneficial arrangement that, that keeps the costs there, the agreement we have there keeps their costs manageable for them as association. But it really covers our basic operational costs, but doesn't help to address our fixed costs that we have out there to operate that facility the way that we would typically wanna see organizations paying for when they're using the facility. All right, other issues. We've had a developer purchase two buildings in the downtown area with the intention of converting them to approximately 100 residential units. That's YNJ Properties. The first of these buildings is under construction now. Actually, they're even doing work, some work on the, initial work on the second one. That first one, though, is, is projected to be completed by the end of this fiscal, or calendar year, 2020. That necessitates the effort from the city to obtain the adjacent land from via NSF to construct a parking lot. We've gotten that pretty much accomplished at this point. We still have to get the deed. We'd have some issues getting that deed filed, so we're, I don't know if there'll be anything that still needs to come through council on that or not. But beyond that, we have, we'll have a need to get that parking lot constructed. That was a project that's budgeted for this year. We're hoping to be out for construction on that sometime this spring.
That funding was coming from the manor?
Yeah, we still had some funds in a, in a capital project that we've reserved for that.
It's about $400,000, right?
We have, I think, a little bit more than that, but it's in that neighborhood that's set aside. I think it might be a little closer to 500, but.
Okay.
One of the things that even today I was talking about with Eric is making sure that, I mean, as we go through the process of building a parking lot for that, that purpose to, to meet their needs, we wanna see that we've got an agreement on the backside that they're committed to using them and make, and paying a decent chunk for those spots. And that's one that we'll probably be having a proposal come forward here in the next couple of months for consideration by the council, too. All right, other development in the downtown. The city has also agreed this last year to work with the developer for the construction of approximately 30 units of upper-story residential housing at the former Tamaa Building site. Funding has been awarded from the state, but the developer has not completed steps to accept the CDVG funding, CDVG, Community Development Block Grant Funding Award as of yet. We'd anticipate that should be coming to the council over the course of the next month or two.
Do we have any worries there that he's going to complete those steps?
Well, I guess the biggest thing, he, the, the original funding request, the city approved, that was about a $4.2 million project with $3.2 million awarded from the state. The state awarded, or he applied for 3.2 of CDVG funds. He was awarded 2.5. They, as part of that reduced reward, the state, or award, the state took off some of the requirements that he would have had to take, spend money on, but it doesn't completely offset the reduced funding amount. So we haven't seen him come back yet and officially accept that. He's verbally said that he plans. Yeah, we haven't gotten a contract from the state yet either, but.
Okay.
They, they're working through those details. We anticipate that that'll come through and we should still see construction begin here in the spring. But until we, until we see it, you know, you're, you're making plans. All right, next thing. Flooding. Flooding in 2019 heavily impacted our downtown, including the Market Street lift station, the depot, auditorium, and port facilities. The operations that are coordinated through Burlington Riverfront Entertainment, BRE, for the use of these facilities has been heavily curtailed. As a result, some of the revenues that we would have anticipated being able to see on a revenue-sharing basis aren't there that we otherwise would have this year, and it most likely will impact their ability next year as well. Staff has invested a significant amount of time into repair and rehab of these structures and other storm-damaged areas. Think that most of them that have had to sit through meetings on a month, or Stephanie would let me know. It was a weekly basis for the majority of the fall. They, they've had to put it into that, they've found those meetings, that whole process could be excessively cumbersome. It's been more time, more time-intensive, unproductive, and slower than previous rounds. I think we've done, in the, in eight years, we've done four. This is our fourth FEMA round of projects, and I would say this is by far the worst one. And I don't have to do any of the work. Would that be accurate, Steph?
It just changes.
It just changes. We have not received, I don't know if we've closed out anything. And the last one, we had projects closed out in 90 or 180 days. So we are way behind on what we've seen in previous rounds. We're sitting right now with about a $500,000 deficit in that account and have not received any reimbursements. It points out the significance of having a significant, or decent cash balance in the general fund. Next item, our combined sewer system, the CSO consent order, has proven difficult to adhere to the schedule. The Market Angular South Locust or Masl Sewer Basin, we have our CSO consent order with Iowa DNR, Department of Natural Resources, calls for that work to be done by 2025. The first portion of the work, the Locust Basin, we were able to start construction on this last year. The overall project will cost a little shy of $9 million for the Locust Basin. The remainder of the Masl has a projected cost of $100 million, $100 million over four years. We have worked, and this is part of our notes last time around. We've worked for the last year, a little bit longer than that, trying to get a modified system of what, what kind of work should be done. We have gone through a process where we're trying to put capital projects forward through an integrated management plan, looking at the sewer system, the sanitary sewer as a, as a whole, letting them see the level of work that we see that needs done throughout the whole system, not just the combined sewer issue, to fully address our community's needs. And also to put that into context with other capital infrastructure work that needs done throughout town. DNR has really bought off on this and has shown themselves to be agreeable to looking at a different approach. However, we have not gotten to a point where we have documents approved. They, we have not, we're, the CSO order that says that we have to have the work done by 2025 has not been amended as of yet. The CIP that we're presenting is based on the idea that DNR will follow through with what they're telling us and allow us to do the work under the integrated management plan rather than the CSO. As we get to the CIP plan, though, we're gonna see more than 20 million of the capital projects over the next five years still really dedicated to work that is tied to projects that are helping to alleviate the combined sewer system overflows. They may not be through that Masl work, some of it is Masl work, other of it is taking care of other basins where we have overflows there, increasing the size of lift stations to try to address some of our storm system overflows in those areas. And it's not gonna be easy to pay for. One of the things that you'll see with our CIP, we have a rate structure for both the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer that's increasing over time. We're funding part of the work through that, but we can't fund all of it there. Some of the work that we're doing, even with getting them to buy into the idea of us only doing $20 million of work rather than $100 million over the next five years, still is calling for us to spend a significant portion of, use a significant portion of our borrowing capacity, GO bond projects, some of the street projects are inclusive of stormwater improvements, as well as TIF, tax increment financing. A lot of the projects we're doing there are specifically towards stormwater improvements. We can't, within our rate structures and our money on hand, we can't afford to do the work otherwise. This places a big limitation on what we can do for capital in other areas, whether it's other infrastructure projects, other community projects, recreational things that we would like to see done that are capital-intensive. We just simply don't have the ability to do everything. This is part of what, what puts a limitation on us. And I varied from what I wrote in there, but it's pretty much the same thing as what I wrote. The last item under this section, last year, we built a budget that included a contingency in the general fund. One of the general fund revenue items is backfill from the state. When the state did a comprehensive change to how property taxes are charged to commercial and industrial property, to multi-residential property, they helped to pull this harmless, at least, to the changes on the industrial and commercial property by promising to make us whole on our lost revenues. Now, they did place a cap on that. Over the first three years, they were pretty close to a dollar-for-dollar make us whole on the, on keeping, providing us the same funding we would have received if they had not reduced the taxes on business and commercial. After the third year, they had that figure capped and, but it still stayed there. It was, it's a standing piece of funds to the, to the cities and counties from the state for a change that they made to the property tax structure. For us, that's about $450,000 annually. Last year, we knew that that was a topic that the legislature was looking to eliminate, whether it was immediately or on a stair-step basis. We held a $100,000 in contingency to accommodate that stair, a stair-step approach on that loss. If they were to have done that last year, we had the financial flexibility to do that. We do not have that ability this year. We are, we are presenting a budget that has that, that backfill amount assumed to be fully funded 100%. If that comes up in the legislature this year, it will be an immediate detrimental impact to what we have and we don't, we're not set up to adjust for it. It's just a little bit larger risk that we run as we go into this next legislative session that we didn't have last year. All right. Next area, review of overall general. I've talked for half an hour. I'm halfway through this. Questions so far?
I think we're just, most, if you're all right with asking as we go, it's good, too.
Yes, please, that's what I should have said.
So Jim, they did not get the backfill passed last year. Are they gonna put more teeth behind it? I mean, are we at risk of that?
So this year, where it will most likely come up, it's not at risk at the moment. And, but, but it is, where it will come up is as other bills are being considered and talked about. And you have, you'll have groups who wanna see funding come in for clean water. One of them I noted earlier was. One of them I noted earlier was the discussion about implementing another penny sales tax. Well, it's going to be a hard sell to get a penny sales tax unless there's a cut somewhere else in expenditures. And you don't know where that may or may not happen at, but this is one of the places that is a potential for that to occur at. It's, I, I see the backfill if it comes up this, this session, given that there aren't any existing financial constraints at the state level, the significant ones that they've dealt with over the last couple of years, be more in the area of the bargaining chip thing depending on what they want to try to accomplish, and they need something to be able to get support for. So it's something to monitor.
It looks like it was going to go through last year. We were all panicking. It looked bad.
So I, I don't think it will, but again, that really kind of depends on the negotiations that occur over the next three months. So. And, you know, when, I guess for the state, the majority of their funds, they're like us, they're committed. They got a lot of their ongoing programs to fund. This isn't one of their programs. It's a promise they made, but it doesn't cut a level of state service. So it makes it easier for it to be the, an item that's cut than something else. Anything else on that? All right, review of overall general fund expenditure budgets and the cost drivers impacting them. Overall wages, budgeted increase two and a quarter percent annually, still in line with what our contract, we, our contracts going through the end of fiscal twenty-one, or, I'm sorry, fiscal twenty. We will be negotiating next, I would assume we'll begin negotiations the end of this calendar year for the following year. City health insurance costs, our budget increased at 5%. Our contracts, one of the items that's within them has us, having, having a process to manage that increase down to where it is on average, 5% annually. Pension systems.
Where's the, where's the city's health insurance through?
Blue Cross Blue Shield. We do, we work through two rivers.
Okay. That's where Cobbco's from.
Yeah, and if you have any question, you're the, Bill, you're going to be doing Cobbco. You're going to want to talk with Stephanie. She can help you to, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's health insurance. It's a complicated program and it has a lot of moving parts, but she can help get you up to speed on that too. Pension systems. Ipers is maintaining a 9.44% contribution from this, from the employer. And the municipal fire and police retirement system of Iowa is increasing from 24.41% to 25.31%. The increase in the MFP-RSI rate is, has an impact of about $55,000 of increased cost of the general fund in and of itself. Property liability insurance, we budgeted that as a 10% increase. For the current year, we just saw a 10% increase. And I think that they thought that our number was pretty realistic based off of what our claims have been. Non-union wages, we've proposed to have those increased, the same 2.25% as the union contracts have, along with the transition table. Transition table, if you have questions on that, we have a range for positions. We have a, what the market rate is, people come in below that typically. Those that are below are able to get closer to that mid-pay level through the transition table. Those that are underneath that mid, mid-level may see a bump of up to 4% rather than the two and a quarter, depending on length of service and how far below that midpoint they are. And again, that's one, if you have questions, we will talk about it later when we go to get, get that transition table approved. But if you have questions during the budget process, Stephanie can help you walk through how that's set up and how, what that, what the basis of that is too. Property tax assessed valuations and revenues based off of them increased 1.8% from last year. It's assisted by the continued release of TIF valuation to the underlying tax entities. Our ability to release additional TIF revenue, which would really provide more flexibility in the general fund, is limited by our fairly aggressive usage of TIF debt, something that we've continued to do in our proposed five-year CIP. So it's a double-edged sword using TIF funds to, to do work. You do limit your ability to fund other, other general fund activities. Overall, proposed budget expenditures in the general fund are $650,000 or 3.2% higher than fiscal year 2020's budget. Key components of that, $650,000, $115,000 of that is hotel motel tax revenue. The way that we are required to account for hotel motel tax revenue makes no sense, but it's what we have to do. We receive it, receive it into the general fund, then we transfer it out to a separate account and the, called the hotel motel tax fund. And from there, we then disperse it, and a lot of it goes right back to the general fund. But just the fact that we have increased revenues flowing through that hotel motel tax fund is, that's a sixth of the increase in the general fund expenditures. Outside of that, the other areas, $220,000 is higher operational cost within the fire department, and $265,000 is higher operational cost within the police department. The primary driver of the increase in emergency services, police and fire expenditures, is personnel costs, salary and benefits. I mentioned MFP-RSI, $55,000 of it is pension, just a change in the, in the funding formula on that. Emergency services now accounts for 58% of overall general fund expenditures. When we look at all department expenditures and take into account their, their offsetting revenues, fire department, for example, with the ambulance and the money that they receive offsets their costs. Within public works, they receive a lot of transit funding that offsets the majority of their costs. When you take that into account and look at just net costs supported by property tax dollars, 64% of general fund property tax dollars are for emergency services. It's been consistent. If you go back and look through the years, it's where about the percentage that we've been on for the last several and where we're projected to be over the next several years. Sanitation or solid waste rates, proposing to increase 25 cents per month for each category of container, the 30, 60, and 90 gallon containers. That same 25 cent increase is proposed for the additional containers, for those who have a, a second 90 gallon or 60 gallon container, for example, on a monthly basis. What were, the primary drivers that we see increasing that, the tipping fee at the landfill is not increasing this year, but we still have the recycling fee increasing 10 cents on a month, monthly basis per customer. And our costs for, largely it's the equipment and personnel, and personnel is wages and benefits. We're trying to keep up with increases that go on in those categories. Stormwater rates are scheduled to increase 3% this, this, this year, as well as annually for the foreseeable future to continue, continue to meet the capital projects that need to be done, whether we're able to get the integrated management plan accepted by the DNR or do the, the combined system, the CSO work that needs to be done. Similarly, for the same reason, sewer rates are budgeted to increase 3% for non-metered accounts and 10% for metered accounts as part of a five-year council-approved rate schedule increase. Where both categories, the metered and non-metered, will increase by the same amounts each year for each of the five years. The reason the non-metered are increasing at a higher rate, our non-metered customers are, are paying a higher amount now. When, I don't know when that occurred, but they are out of line. Our average metered customer is able to pay a, a lower fee right now than what our non-metered's are, and we're trying to get them into balance. The end of five years, with those stagger, those two rate category changes, we should be at a point where the two categories are pretty equivalent. Regardless, the amount of work that we need to do within our sanitary and, and stormwater systems, we cannot accomplish with these rate increases. We just, we have a, we have a list of projects that goes out to 2065 for existing needs that we're trying to work within this rate structure. It's, we're, we're just way behind on what needs done in our community. All right, other items. I got two. One of them will get covered, I assume, by Chief here in a little bit. The police department presented a plan three years ago, was it four years ago now, to hire six officers over the course of three years, two per year. The council, at the time that plan was presented, approved, they were receptive of the overall proposal, and they approved the hiring of those first two. Since that time, we have not brought on the other, other officers that were part of that staffing plan. And it's, they're not included in the budget that you have to see presented before you. The budget that you have presented before you is balanced, there's about a $5,000 net positive cash flow in it. On a $21 million budget, it funds existing staff and services. Any changes in staffing levels will only be done by making a cut somewhere else or raising a revenue, a new revenue stream, most likely a property tax levy increase. During the presentation, I assume that Chief, you'll talk about some different staffing options. I mean, the positions that we've talked about have been, do you add more line officers on the street on a per-shift basis? Do you look at adding, within the detective department, do you change your, your pop unit structure to have a group that can just do that community-oriented policing? And then on the backside, if you do make any changes in services, how do you handle the evidence that comes out of it? I mean, we're behind now on evidence, and it's one that the chief would like to see the evidence tech move from a part-time to a full-time position. And you add too much for staff and your records clerk's needs change dramatically too. Keep in perspective, putting a new officer on the street, pay is in a $50,000 range, but when you do inclusive of all benefits, it's closer to, if they're on family, it's closer to $85,000 annually for costs for one officer. I would suspect that if there's any issue that, that drives discussion for changes in level of service that we have as a community, this is the area that, that would come up during the course of this budget season. However, it will be a difficult decision because it does, again, only happen if you make a decision to cut something else or raise taxes, raise some revenue stream. The other area that I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we have not taken care of, it's not as easy to see as, with what happens day-to-day as what happens with our staffing and fire and police and those emergency services work. We made a significant amount of cuts to staffing back in 2013. Over the years, we've replaced not all, but a majority of those positions in police and fire. We haven't replaced those positions in a lot of other areas. The area that that has hurt the most has been in public works. And once, one of the positions out there in particular, when, when a decision was made to eliminate the position that was halftime in bus management and halftime in ride-away management, the duties there, the, the ride-away management fell on engineering, which meant that engineering department now, now has their efforts spread into areas that they were not doing before and just makes it harder for them to do the engineering work they have to do. But the, the other side is on, with bus management, the day-to-day operations of that has to fall either down the, the staffing chain or up, down to the lead driver or up to Nick. And the more time that, that they put into what they're, into trying to do that, the less that they're able to do with the other things that need done. And I'd say that management out there is not able to keep up with what really needs done for bus service. And we've limped along out there for the last six years. It's impacted the way that Nick can do his duties that need done.
Jim, I don't understand the part about the relief driver. Can you elaborate on that?
Lead driver.
Lead driver.
I thought you said relief. I'm sorry. Bad hearing.
Are we going to get an estimate on that position at any point in time in this budget process?
We can do that. We can look at what the position was before or where it fit on our table and, and what that cost is.
On our bus service, do we get any, we don't get any cost sharing or anything, West Burlington?
We get $3,000 a year.
That's it?
A little bit more than that, but it's in that neighborhood. Yeah, the, the, the system itself, we receive.
Is that $3,000 a year appropriate? Or are we providing significantly more of a service than we're being compensated for?
Appropriate is in the eye of the beholder.
True.
We are required to have a bus system.
In your eye, the service we provide to West Burlington.
I've, I've been in the smaller community before. We're the ones that are required to have a bus service. West Burlington is not. It's a convenience for them. So for them, they, they don't have a requirement to make any payment. They don't have a requirement to provide the service. So yeah, you can say, should, is there justification for asking them for more? Yeah. But they don't have a requirement to be involved at all. So it's, it's, that's, that's a hard dyna, it's a difficult dynamic.
Let's get in for that.
I'm trying to find revenues. Transit, we receive a million dollars? Majority of that is, the majority of the revenues we receive from transit, federal and state, and I can't remember the total amount of those, but they're, we don't, our net cost to operate the bus is about $200,000 a year. So for them to spend, to pay three or four thousand towards it, it's not a huge amount, but it's not, even, even with that, if you tried to put it on per-population, per-capita basis, it's not tremendously out of line either when you look at our net cost for the system. However, we're doing it without, well, we have half a Nick salary in, in that budget line item, but we're doing, I think it's split, isn't it? I think it's 50/50. It's, we're doing it without, with a position, with a position short from what we should be doing. But yeah, we can get, as the course of this discussion goes on, what that number would be. My suspicion would be more in this, even with benefits, more in the $70,000 range, maybe low? Okay, maybe low.
For that position?
With benefits. You've got to remember, and benefits is.
No, I understand, I understand.
$15,000 is health insur, actually, family health insurance is $20,000 now. So it's not hard to get over that. But yeah, I, I, I struggle here because I know that Nick can't get done what he really should be doing, whether, it's, and to evaluate what he does get done, I mean, he has to do the best that he can, but I know he's impaired by the, by what his limitations are there. It impacts his ability to, to manage bus correctly, and when you're not, when you're devoting more time to that area than what you should, overall, it means, it, it means that you're not getting something done somewhere else that should be.
Well, and the way that I look at it is, if we're having Nick do the work, we're paying more on a per-hour basis for that work than we should be, because I'm assuming we're paying Nick more than we would a bus director.
Point two. All right, so I, and that would make more sense anyway.
Right?
Yeah.
And I know in 2013, when they went through and made all those cuts, they cut a lot of positions. Because if you go look at public works, there was an office that used to house somebody, it's almost like a ghost town, parts of it. There's an office that used to house somebody, this used to house a position, and now there's nothing there.
Not all of those were 2013, no.
What was it?
If, not all of those were 2013. In fact, if you were to go back to, I don't know, the highest employment level was probably 2004-ish or so. 2004-ish or so?
Yeah.
And I'm just going off the top of my head, but we, there were a lot of cuts that occurred in the years before I was here. I know that Doug had to cut a lot of positions over time, too. And that...
That's coffee machine.
That gets me through my, my stuff. I mean, the stuff that's listed there on the back then, on page six, we'll be doing the five, the five-year CIP and reviewing, and then Stephanie will review local option sales tax and hotel motel tax both on Monday night. Terms of other things to show, yeah, put that one up, just to get an idea of where we stand. We're not looking to make any change to our property tax levy in this proposed budget. We've been at 1634. So this is a, this table here is all the cities that are over 20,000 population in the state, there are 22 of them. Burlington's numbers are highlighted there. The, we're, if you look over, one, two, three, the fourth column is the levy and this is a comparison from last year, because you don't know what other entities are doing for this current year. They're just in the middle of making their budget presentations. But if you see us at 1634, you look down to the bottom, the average of the 22 cities, the tax, the property tax levy was $14.84 per thousand. So we're a significant amount above it.
Go ahead.
In the two columns to the right of that, you see the debt service levy, which is part of that, where we're at 380 and the average is 268. You can look at that and, I mean, that's almost all of what, where we end up being higher than the average community, it's all on debt service. We are a highly leveraged community. Part of the reason that we have to be, though, if you look back to the, just the third column, the taxable value per capita, per person, our valuation per person in town is $29,600 versus an average of $48,000. We have two-thirds of the valuation backing each person in town. It means we have less property value to spread a given amount of taxes across. We can do the same project in our community, building a new building, doing the rehab of the, the Police Department, costing $4 million. The bond levy for that here is going to cost, I mean, just as, if you look, look just at what that debt service levy is up there, if the average community is 270, if that's what it was to take to cover a, a project like that, for us, the same dollar amount project is going to be over $4. I mean, we just cannot do the same level of work, we cannot fund the same level of service as what our comparison cities can, because our valuation is so low on a per-person basis. When you don't have a lot of property value backing your community in a, in a statewide system that is all based on property value, you are going to struggle. And this is our biggest limitation.
Jim, and obviously it doesn't have to, I'm wondering if we could, this form where it shows these numbers, if there would be a way, I'm sure it would involve some work, so I don't know if it's worthwhile, but to see what the five-year trend is on these cities. I mean, that, that, those numbers are out there, so we, could you help me get that together? I would kind of like to see who's going up, who's going down.
I can, we can, I can, we, we have them, because we've done this Excel spreadsheet for the last five or six years, and we can get you that. We, they, there hasn't been a lot of movement. There have been a couple of communities that have moved around a little. One thing I will point out, and I think that you'll see, the Fort Dodge and the Tamla have gotten worse.
Yeah.
And I don't know where the, the tipping point is, but you get, I think there is a tipping point where you get high enough that it becomes detrimental to your future growth. I don't know if, that we're over that line, but there, there's somewhere out here where you get to that point where I think it, it's hard to overcome.
Each community is going to be different, right?
Yes.
Each community's equilibrium point is going to be a different number, based on the makeup of that community. I actually have some of those numbers, too, Jim, if you need them, but...
Well, I, I know I have my last two-year sheets.
You just want the valuation?
Yeah. No, I was looking to see, I would look, look to see the trends, who's going up, who's going down.
With the trends in valuation?
Valuation, as well as who's raised their levy, who hasn't?
Oh.
Who's held the line? That's, those are the things I'm looking at, so all the way across.
Well, and some of this, we'll make a comparison on the next sheet, but first, I mean, just think through who's up at the top at the lowest property tax levies. Ames, Dubuque, Ankeny, Urbandale. I mean, and look at the valuation that goes with them. We're never going to compete with those communities, they're not, they're, they're, they're done, the dynamics of what is going on there is completely different than us. We do use another sheet that, to compare where we sit with more comparable communities for us. The seven towns that are between 20 and 30,000 a population. And if you look here, we really don't fall out of line with what's going on in these other communities. Our valuations, you see the per capita valuation there, we're close to the average. Atumwa, Fort Dodge, Burlington, Clinton, Muscatine, Marshletown, Mason City, we're all communities that are not part of a major metro area, have sim, I mean, there, there's still differences between us, but there, there's a lot of the same limitations on the dynamics that you fall in more of a, a major, major city and more of a rural area. And we, but even here, you still see that our debt service levy, we still fall well above the average. And that's, I mean, this is just sort of some backdrops, it's not, I mean, it's what it is, it's, but it, it's, it does help to point out what some of our limitations are. Other sheets that you have in here, I'm not sure what I want you to put up there yet, Eric. You have a couple of sheets that are revenues by department, you can put it up for, the first two, the gross general fund revenues, you can see by department. For example, there in the Fire Department, our proposed budget in '21 on the revenue side, Fire Control is significantly lows, lower, while we're losing Safer Grant. At the same time, the ambulance from the actual revenues back in '19 to what's proposed in the '21 budget, it's significantly higher than actuals from last year's because of the ground emergency medical transport funding. Now, we have that budget, budgeted in the current year, and you can see there's not a whole lot of increase from one year to the next there. Ambulance revenue is essentially about flat. And the other thing, the bottom of the second page, the next one, if you move to the bottom of that, the main, main thing to point out, last, the current year's, FY19's net revenue, we were budgeting revenue to be $46,000 higher than expenditures. The current year, $51,000. The proposed budget for this next year is tighter, at $5,000. I, I don't like having that small of a net margin, but at the same time, we're, we are over the 15% threshold, and I, I feel that there's a little bit of flexibility, plus I've already asked the departments to cut, was it $50,000 overall or $100,000? $50,000 overall out of their budget, so it's just a tight budget here. And I felt like we could afford to have, have it come closer to a balanced budget and be all right, given where our cash balance is. Next sheet, the gross general fund expenditures, and this is here for you to, this, more of a, again, summary level. Can see, for example, in the Fire Department, what's happened, changes there in their requested funding. 5.6 million for the current year, 5.8 million next year, almost all of that is in Fire Control and Ambulance, and it's almost all personnel costs. Changes in MFPRSI, the Retirement System Amount, pay, the pay increase and health insurance costs. And in the Police Department, it's in the Patrol Division, and that's, again, those same things. You see the pay increases, health insurance costs, and retirement, a little bit higher in that, has a $240,000 increase on their budget. You notice, again, the proposed, that proposed budget, the Fire Department is 27% of total general fund expenditures. You can see the Police Department's at 31% of total general fund. If you move down, Eric, Developments at 3.5. Culture and Rec is 15%. You can see the breakdown of that, the largest item, about half of that is the library, but you have the auditorium, park maintenance, forestry, swimming pool, et cetera in there. Human Services is essentially nothing. Next page. And you see Don made it in the room because he knew that he didn't want to listen to me talk, but he did want to hear the Chief's presentation.
Don, there's pizza, help me out.
Very perceptive.
Public Works, is 10% of overall costs and Administration is 8.5. And I, if you go behind that, the next set, two sheets, I showed general fund expenditures net of what they, their grants and, or fees. For the Fire Department, again, the biggest things that they have that come in there, the Safer Grant that they've had, county-wide fire protection payments that they receive, ambulance payments, and then the ground emergency medical transport, helps to offset a good chunk of their costs. The Police Department doesn't get very much of theirs offset. So you, this gives you a little bit of perspective of the net cost of the departments, and it, it flips it a little bit, but not a tremendous amount. And now you have, out of what is funded really by property tax dollars, it's closer to 24% Fire Department, 40.5% to the Police. And the area that you see the biggest change, as you move down, Culture's a little higher, it's on the next sheet. Public Works went down from a little over 10% of overall cost to the net cost, it's a little over 5%. And Administration's still in about that 10% range. Gives you just a high level of where the general fund costs are. One thing I'd also note, we do, I do a five-year sheet that kind of projects out what happens over five years, based off of trends. I don't, I have one number on there that I'm not sure that I got really updated on, on property tax collections, so it might not be a true figure, but we, whereas we have about a $5,000, yeah, I think that page. We have, for the current year, $5,000 as your net revenue, you only have it showing going out for three years. But we start to see a deep, we start to see a deficit occur out as the years go on. Well, I know that $50,000 of that immediately is losing the Safer Grant. We do get $50,000 of Safer Grant revenues that's fallen the FY20 budget, or '21 budget that won't be in FY22. The rest of it is just looking at projections of if everybody stays in their positions and you continue to have the 2.25% raises and property taxes continue to increase at the rate that they have been. Again, I know that I have one number that I didn't adjust right on that. We had been doing property tax increases of about 1.7%, and really, our 10-year average is closer to 2, 2.1%. So I need to adjust what I'm using for a comparison factor. The biggest thing I see there is, is that we have headwinds and, moving into the future to maintain existing levels of service. I don't think that's overcomable, because, I mean, that same situation we had last year, and we're able to make things happen this year, but we had to do some cuts. We just internally staffed before we presented the budget. It's tight. We are not a high-growth community, we are subject to limitations, and you have to know that as you go through this budget process. I think that can be it for my report on it. Right behind that, you see a League, League of Cities has their special report in there, and I'd encourage you to go ahead and, you can read through there, these are just some overall trends on a statewide basis, and some of the, it gives a little bit of discussion of some of the, the major funding sources that communities have, and some of the main categories of expenditures that you can take a look at. That special report has also a summary of some of the big legislative issues that have, have had an impact recently, to be able to take a look at. Any questions before we move over to Police Department presentation?
I guess you're up.
Again, as you're going, most of our budget meetings are going to be departments presenting their, what their department looks like, what they have for ongoing operations, what are the major things that are going on in their areas. If you're looking to make any changes from what you see presented, you're going to have to bring it up fairly early in this process and be bringing that, and be having those discussions at the same time, because it's going to be difficult to do at the end, we won't have much time.
Gotcha.
Here's that PowerPoint, please, because I know it's hard to see up there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Chief. Does anybody need to take a break before the Chief gets rolling? Looks like he's got about 100 pages here.
Depends, is, is he going to talk as long as Jim? Because if he is...
I don't, Jim said he was at a halfway through at about five minutes till four, so I think he was a little bit off. He went a little longer than he was supposed to.
You interrupted me. Oh, wait a second, you didn't say anything.
That's a, that's a tough act to follow, though, with Jim spouting off his balanced budget, and I know you like your balanced budget, Jim, and, and I appreciate that about you, I really do. And it's, it's nice to see Don chill up, at least somebody cares, I appreciate that, Don. And Rhonda came to listen, so I do appreciate that. On the, on the PowerPoint that I have up, I first, I first want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to at least talk to you about some of the things here. Everything's not in stone and, and, and I know that, but there's some things that go through the budget, I won't impress you with the numbers like Jim does. Some of my figures may be a little bit different, and I'll try to explain why they appear that way, but we'll just get started here and roll through it. It shouldn't take as long as, as what Jim had to go over. On the, on the very first one, I just want to talk a little bit about it. This picture here was taken by National Studios, and, and we all know that Randy Fox is a local person, and what we did this year and just got done is, we, we took this picture and put it on to our, our poster board, our photo board for the department. And you may ask, what's the importance of that photo board rather than just a, a picture? A lot of times we have people come down and want to know, hey, I talked to an officer and they don't know which one it was, and it helps us do that. And plus, it's a memorabilia that's in the department, and we, we take the old ones and put them in the museum, so, you know, hopefully, when I'm long gone and we're all long gone, that somebody can look back and see their relatives on there. And it's, it has presented itself in the past. So that's a little trivia there to go with that. Basically, the overview of what I'm going to present tonight is the overall budget, and we'll talk, basically, in a, just a, an overview of what all is in that budget, and then the police operations itself, the cost of the police operations, and then we'll talk about capital, some of the major expenses, including a proposed project that's in that capital plan, and, and I'll explain a little bit about that and give you an opportunity to ask a question. And then it rolls right into the operational enhancements, some things we're trying to do in the department, and then a staffing overview, and whether we stay with the current staffing, status quo or additionals, the cost of it. Like Jim said, the overall budget for us is $6,735,000 and some change there. I know Jim's big into rounding up or rounding down, but I put the actual dollars up there. It's a, it's a kind of a, it's hard for me to get past that, those extra dollars, I guess to be accountable for them. The patrol operations is, like he said, basically the bulk of the expense as you can see up here with the 4.7 million right there. And that, that cost is the heart of the department. Anytime we have things going on in the department, whether it's low staffing levels or whatever, I always go back to and revert back to the patrol operation. That patrol operation is the heart of the department. When someone calls, they want to see a police officer, they want us to respond and to not have those personnel available is a crucial mistake on, on my part to not have that, that basically the patrol operation funded and ready to go. Also you'll see on here, and Jim kind of talked a little bit about the task force operation is partially funded with, and I want to say partially, a very small portion and it's decreased over the years, the grant funding that comes from the state and federal level for that position. However, drug investigations haven't changed, they probably have increased and again, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. The other thing you see here is the K-9 unit that we've implemented and it was probably three years ago when we did some funding or longer than that. It's close to five, it's coming up on five years ago because we had K-9 Asta and now we have K-9 Rico since K-9 Asta went out of service. And so we talked a little bit about that and the funds that were raised, donated and that are run through our community policing foundation or our Oneon Bird Foundation. So this year that comes to, those funds will be depleted about October of 20. So we had talked previously when I presented here about the K-9 overtime that is a necessity for him to maintain the dog at home for training. He goes out and works with the dog on a daily basis and is paid basically eight hours according to fair labor standards. He's paid eight hours of overtime each pay period, which is two weeks, so 16 hours a month. So that cost is what you're seeing right there for that K-9 unit. Any other cost and expenditures will also come to us, but you, you also need to know the community support for that program. I routinely receive donations for the dog and the continued support of that program. So you know, there's some backfill there, it's just not going to rise to that occasion. It could surprise me, there's people out there that really love that program and, and at this point that K-9 Rico is doing a lot of great work for us. The last one is parking enforcement, that $46,722. I include it kind of in, in the general fund presentation kind of erroneously. It doesn't, I don't think it comes into that, Jim, or comes out of that, so it's an enterprise fund.
One of the things that we would note out of there, we have not shown needing to fund it with general fund subsidies, but depending on what happens as we've made our lots move more to free lots, we may find that we end up having a shortfall and it may have an impact on the general fund. We have not budgeted for it there though. It's in a separate, separate account.
Okay. And then, well, like I said, when I, when I talk about being controversial, I mean, people want parking downtown, but people don't want to be, receive a parking ticket, you know, and, and that's all of us included, so I'm not left out of that. I don't like receiving it and sometimes you have to just put your money in the envelope and throw it in the, throw it in the till, so that's what I mean by controversial. Moving along to the general fund cost, administration, there's a slight decrease there, $18,000. I think that's, some of it's, it's definitely not in wages, it's more like in contractual services and, and like, things like that that we found that we could cut some, cut some fat out of there, so we've budgeted that just a little bit differently. So there's a savings there. It's definitely made up for in the cost, the $271,000 in the patrol line item of, and like Jim said, I, I went back and dug through my spreadsheets that I have. His are a little bit different, but I keep my, my own tally down there and a lot of it's in looking for ways to trim that and it's personnel. But again, the heart of my business is personnel, you know, we want people to respond. I mean, that, that is the, that is the crux of it, so.
Would an increase in calls that you have to, to answer, would that cause that number to go up?
Not necessarily. What drives it is basically personnel and wages, just having those available, but having the personnel available for those responses and, and not, one of my concerns this past year is overworking the officers that were there, you know, and driving them to the point of them not wanting to do the job anymore and leaving, so that, that's a concern of mine.
I understand that.
Crime prevention, there's no change. DESCOM is kind of a, you know, we can talk a little bit about that. That's, that comes out of my budget, but it, it supplies the, the emergency communications for the, for the city. So the animal control, you see this number here, this 6,000, a little bit of that is wages and benefits, but majority of it is the animal shelter itself. Some of those funds go to the animal shelter for maintenance, for veterinary care, whether it's to euthanize, whatever that may be, that comes into that item, that line item, line item also. And like I said, the maintenance and cleaning of the shelter is also in there. So as those fees increase and, and the personnel to do that and the, and the equipment needed and the maintenance of that shelter also is another thing that I keep an eye on. The K-9 unit overtime, we talked about that and parking enforcement is there also. This is kind of just an overall budget and a graph and the increase, like Jim said, is, and he rounds up to 265,000, I think is what you said, Jim, the increase overall in the, in the expenditures there. And it includes the contractual services, personnel and commodities that are all in there. And what you see here with this one here in black, the darker color, is what's proposed expenditures for fiscal year 20, you know. There's times when sometimes it gets to that level, sometimes we try not to get it over that level, but sometimes it's under it, so just so you know that that's proposed. This one here is always a tough one for me. Gross general fund revenues and I had to ask questions this year and Stephanie explained some of it to me as Jim talked a little bit about it also, where those revenues come from because we're not a revenue generating department. I mean, we don't charge people for a lot of stuff. Some of the ambu, or not ambulance, but the false alarm fees, which is very minimal. The other, the other revenue that we generate is through grants that comes back into this, but most of it, if, if I'm correct Stephanie, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it comes from local option, sales tax. That local option sales tax is that one penny?
Yeah, and so I don't do, when I do my net cost, I don't take that into account.
Okay.
But yes, out of, out of local option sales tax, we fund a fifth of your patrol division personnel costs.
Okay.
And all of your capital equipment purchases. So we'll do a transfer to the general fund to cover those two pieces. It's a little over 800,000 for a fifth of your patrol division personnel cost and then about 200,000 for the equipment.
Okay.
And when you're doing your equipment purchases for this next year in the current, in the FY21, that's all covered for out of local option sales tax. We transfer it into the general fund, he expenses it in the general fund.
I see. I learn something every year I do this, so. Some of the, some of the grants, the only other grant that I left out when I was talking about the, the drug task force grant was the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, which they typically give us 16,000, around that 15, 16,000 that we apply for every year to run traffic and that's on an overtime basis and it passes through.
And your other bigger, big funding stream is your shared arrangement with the school system for two officers in the school system. You get about 112,000.
Yes.
110,000 in a year.
Yes, that passes, that passes or comes into that revenue. I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the police operation itself and, and the current, where we, I guess where we currently stand with 45 officers and we have four full-time and we have a full-time janitor that we share with City Hall here. He comes to our department, cleans and, and he comes up here and does some work also. We have three part-time support staff, one, the animal control officer, the parking enforcement officer, and then the evidence tech or evidence specialist that I have is part-time. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. For the new council, I, it's kind of maybe a little more interesting to you because I've gone over this, this is pretty much the same slide I put in every year, but it kind of lays out here how we distribute the personnel throughout the department. And you'll hear me talk a little bit later. These SROs are full-time officers. When I say it's funded 100%, that's not the whole year, that's nine months at 100%. So there's still three months that it's fun, coming out of the general fund and that's what Jim was talking about. And this one is 45%, so that kind of explains that. This POP unit will come up a little bit later, two officers on a flexible schedule and I have one of those positions vacant right now. And then the other one is criminal investigations. I have a lieutenant that's assigned up there to supervise that and currently I have three detectives assigned up there, general crime detectives or general crim detectives is what I call them. And then also working in the investigations division is the task force. There's a detective from the Burlington Police Department and then there's an investigator that comes from the Sheriff's Department and then recently Wes Burlington had some personnel issues and backed out, so we went to Henry County and partnered with them for a part-time position to come over there that they takes a portion of the funding, I think it's 20% of the grant and funded and the rest is paid by Henry County. So we're cooperating more outside of Des Moines County to try and keep that investigative unit active. So I have basically two and a half people to work narcotics. On the flip side of that, we also work with the Iowa Department of Narcotics Enforcement. We work with the DEA, the FBI and the, our other federal partners to kind of fill in. So that kind of explains this portion of it here, where we're short right now, you know, and what's going on there. And I'll talk a little bit more because I have a slide in here showing the, basically the organizational chart and we'll talk a little bit more about it. This is the personnel expense by comparison of what we was approved for last year's budget. This is what's proposed this year and this is the differences kind of give you the, an idea just in a, in a graph form and it kind of explains it down at the bottom, but it's basically a 4.3% increase if my figures are right. I'm always nervous about this because I have Jim in the room and he can look at it and just go right through it, but I think that's, that's comparatively where we're at with the increases.
The animal control and parking enforcement, those are part-time positions.
Yes, yes. And administration, administration contains myself, one major, my administrative assistant and the records department and the janitor. Full-time overtime and I, I put this slide up here just so you get an idea and I know that we talk about it a lot during the budget season, where we're at, how far we're going to go. And I, I put it up here with this date here in mind and it's, right now we're at $106,000 in overtime expense and, and how to control that from my standpoint. And over the last year, I've had hired six new officers over the last year just from, well, it was two in each academy, so that's from April on. So when I say I hired them, I've had officers leave the department. When somebody leaves, it costs me overtime to keep my minimum shift strength up to where it needs to be for those responses that we have. Also over the course of the last year, crime rate kind of drives or crimes kind of drive our overtime needs when it comes to homicides. They're, homicides take a lot of time for us to work and the detectives work a lot of hours in overtime, so that kind of drives some of those expenses right there. I think that fund right now, and I just looked at it as, as raw data, but some of the, some of the things that's still to come out of there is we get funded back from the state on, it's called a meth grant that pays some of the overtime on meth investigations that we work or put in, so that comes back through there. We also have a, some money coming back from the large investigation that we culminated in the November arrest warrants and search warrants that we did through the federal government. So some of that money will come back, it's just not showing it right now. I, I still think what we budgeted 110,000, I'll be, I'll definitely be over that by, by the end of June. So, and, and a lot of that is attributed to when, when somebody leaves and me having to replace somebody, when somebody quits the department and goes. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about, hearing a little bit about, well, I guess I can talk to you a little about, about it now. Through this budget presentation, I'm planning for two officers to retire this next budget year and planning for that retirement and that position being vacant. So when I talk about the training budget, I figured in to train two officers, not anymore into that budget. So when you look at those numbers of why it's at that, I haven't figured in, like last year I have not figured in to train six officers. I figured in to train two and so those costs will overrun.
So even with hiring the six officers, you're still short of what was budgeted staffing-wise, aren't you?
Yes, by one right now.
By one officer.
Yeah, because Major Grimshaw retired. That's where the shortfall just came in.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't have anybody to immediately backfill. I have two officers in the, in the academy and I still have to hire the one in April to fill, Major Grimshaw's leaving. So I'm really short three that I can utilize and it goes a little bit further than that because I don't count probationary officers that are in the training program as one officer yet until they're out on their own and fully trained and capable of doing what they need to do.
And that's six months, right? Give or take?
Four. The FTO process is about four.
Oh, okay.
About four months. It takes four months at the academy and then about another four, four and a half months. So I figured nine months before, from the date I hire them until they're ready to go by themselves and that's at the, that's if they're at an acceptable level, but through the training process.
Unless you can poach somebody from another department that's already trained.
Yeah, and, and we throw that bait out there, we just don't have anybody, you know, wanting to come and, and do that. So it's a big, it's a big move for someone to leave one department and come to another department. It's either as a result of family or something else, something else that's happening that they want to do that. Full-time overtime, just in a graph, I've, I've done a lot of these graphs. I try to show you by talking to you, by, in writing and color, everything, just so everyone has a good understanding of, of what we're doing, so.
So that jump was, that jump was due to the overtime related to the homicides and the lack of personnel is what you're saying?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, I mean, it eats up a lot of overtime hours, you know, and trying to, there's, there's some of that that's built in. When I, when I mean built in, we have to account for vacation time, for that sick time and the other thing that comes into account, and I know I, I'd put it in here to talk about a little later, is military leave. We have some officers that are in the National Guard that we support and I have one that's going to be leaving in April, I think it's April, May timeframe, he'll be gone for a year from the department projected. So that's the other position I have to hold, that'll be a shortfall. So, and like I said, I know at one time this summer, we were down to, I think it was 39 officers to deploy and still having the crime that was happening and they, they're pretty resilient, they backfill really easily and, and get the job done, they never hesitate, so. But it comes at a, at a price, you know, of, of the overtime, you need to pay them for their time, so. Capital items, to talk about a little bit of what, what I did in my capital improvement plan for the five years. One of the things I talked about last year, if you remember, is we talked a little bit about buying a hybrid vehicle and I had given, been given some misinformation by about buying a hybrid vehicle. And, and I had given, been given some misinformation by the fleet, Ford fleet person, that it was gonna be around that thirty-three thousand dollar cost. When I went to purchase this year, they were well over thirty-five thousand. So it was three thousand, about three thousand dollars more a vehicle to purchase those. And then I got some reviews back and I'm glad I didn't because there, there's a lot of departments that are not satisfied with them. So maybe it was a blessing in disguise. So I stayed with the regular purchasing that we did with the Fords. And we started looking a little bit more this year at, at the state bid process. And we found that switching to a Dodge Durango is, is probably, I'm gonna say a five thousand dollar savings overall on the expense of the vehicle, the equipment and everything that goes with it. The state bid price for a Dodge is a little bit cheaper and it's a more quality vehicle. So much so that this year, we can't buy Dodge Charger anymore this year. They're not gonna make enough to fulfill their bids or their, their wants this year. And that's in the state of Iowa and other departments. So everybody found the bid price was really nice and was doing the same thing. I just got on the wagon too late. So with that being said, next year hopefully the Durangos will be a, a good vehicle. And I dropped my quantity back. I had three in last year's capital improvement plan. I went back and double-checked with the staff and found the mileage on some of those vehicles and, and the usage is down. So we can get by with two. So I reduced it back to two.
So are you gonna move the whole fleet from Ford to Dodge?
At this point.
Is there any, is the operating cost higher from fuel efficiency things like that?
No, they have, they'll have a.
Cause you'd be going from a six to an eight, won't you?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I won't run that Hemi in there. There's no need for me to have that kinda horsepower here in town. So we'll run the six, the six cylinders in those.
Okay.
Out on, out on the flat road, it's probably a little different. Like out on the highway for, like a state trooper, just to turn around and, and getting from zero to sixty or however fast they need to go to catch up to that violator or whatever they're doing is different. Whereas we drive, you know, at a shorter distance here in town.
Yeah.
The other thing is the equipment. And the other thing I wanted to point out is here you'll see, in the past, we've purchased used vehicles, used what I wanna call just regular, a regular vehicle that anyone can buy. We've decided to look at buying a new car because we found the difference is maybe four thousand, we were, we were asking for thirty-five hundred, four thousand on the ticket price. So we figured we can get at least maybe two, maybe three more years out of those vehicles when we're not buying a used vehicle with forty thousand miles on it. And actually buy a police, police package, similar to a police package. We wouldn't buy like the larger motors or anything like that, but something at a state bid in that price range. So we're, and it will push that need for a replacement vehicle out a few more years. This is the operating equipment. Some of it's for the squad car. These here will replace. There's two, one for each squad car to replace those computers. After they've been in a car for four or five years, those computers kinda get used a lot. And, and when I say that, to, to transfer them computers from one car to another, I'm afraid, and, and I've talked to IT, both the salespeople and our IT department, and they both say you're better off to replace them than it is to try and utilize them and then fix them when they're broke. So that's why that happens. Tasers is, we have them on a rotation to replace those and cycle those through. And we have basically thirty officers on the department. So that, well, there's probably more than that because the command staff, some of the command staff, thirty-five. So it's on a, basically a five-year rotation to, to replace those. PBTs, those pieces of equipment, the radar and PBTs, court certified, ready to, ready for, rated to, to go to court. We have to make sure that they're, they're certifiable and that we can utilize those. And we try to rotate those out every five years also.
Chief, what's a PBT?
Preliminary, preliminary breath test.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Getting like the military talking in acronyms. In the capital budget, this is one of the things, a, a project that I, I had wanted to do and there's some reasons for it. But these figures that I have here are from a company that I had been talking to when it comes to redoing our car camera systems and replacing all of our body worn video cameras. We tried to do, tried to do that to recycle those, or to cycle those through when we traded out cars and, and things of that nature. But what I've been finding is, is that there's some issues with it. And you ask what the need is, is here. I mean, some of the information that we get off of those videos is very crucial to investigations that we do. It's also a, a good way to, to hold not just us accountable, but everybody accountable for their actions, whether it's us working on the street or the person that we're working with on the street as to what was said and what was done. So it's an, it's an opportunity for us to do that. And I'm looking to do a, this figure here, this hundred and twenty thousand is a department-wide change. And when I say department-wide, there's some things in here when you're talking about the backend server and this electronic dissemination software. And then of course there's licensing with the, what we use now and what we'd use in the future. Some of the other things is the wireless video transfer. We do that now. And, and that's a, a nice feature. When we pull into the parking lot, it automatically downloads into the system, which is, which is nice. But the other things is, you'll see there's fourteen car camera systems. I have fourteen squad cars at this point. And you'll see there's sixteen. When we purchase those initially, they'll come with a body worn camera with those systems. So overall, they'll be purchasing of thirty body worn cameras for the officers and then fourteen in-car systems. That's why you see the sixteen down here, just to explain that. This is some kind, some of the justifications. The current provider we have, and, and this has been going on for probably eighteen months. I, we've been having a difficult time reaching somebody, getting ahold of somebody. We had some body worn cameras that were late on delivery, you know, right from the start of the fiscal year, almost a year before we got the product. There was troubles with it catching fire and things they had to send back to R and D and then come back out of R and D. And then they, they sent it out for beta testing. And then finally we got the products delivered. I asked a lot of questions and I'm just giving you a little the insight. I asked a lot of questions of the, of the company and the person I was talking to. And I had the sense and feeling that, and I asked him flat out, are, are you guys going out of business or something happening that I'm not aware of? And he said, no, most definitely not, most definitely not. Well, three months later, they sold out to another corporation. And this corporation does not specialize in, in law enforcement camera systems or police video. And that's, that's to me, an indication to me that it's time to, to maybe move out and just with the service that we're getting. On the other side of that, I have, and that's what I'm talking about when I talk about delay of product delivery and service and, and being sold. The other things I consider is this right here, those DVDs, the printer burner, the DVDs are running us anywhere from four, I, I get the best guess I can, between four and five thousand dollars a year to, to produce those DVDs out of there. And that's just the DVD expense itself. And then we have the cost of the printer burner. I know the last one I bought, I think was eighty-five hundred dollars for that robot to burn those DVDs. I haven't even begun to talk about the packaging and delivery and the personnel expenses. And I'll talk a little bit about the, the evidence specialist that handles those and the amount of time they put into that. And you ask, how much time can it be? Each one of those cases, when we arrest somebody, there'll be a request for those DVDs and they'll burn them off and send them to the, to the county attorney's office. And we get requests from defense attorneys. And, and when we get those requests, those are burned off and sent out. We do get paid from some of the defense attorneys that do that. So there is a little bit back, but I can't account for a lot of that time it takes to search for the video and then burn it to a DVD. The new system that we're, we were looking at does this through the cloud and it makes it accessible to those entities electronically versus me copying off and burning every DVD. So it, it'll, it'll, I guess accommodate some of that time. And I'm trying to get some time back for that evidence technician or evidence specialist there. The upgraded platform, the, the things that are available now on those cameras that are on those systems in, in the cars is a lot different than what was before. The system I looked at actually did a panoramic camera attached with the camera that goes forward and, and a lesser view. But sometimes there's things in that panoramic view that you don't catch. But there's also some things on the other camera that goes forward that, that are important to be in focus. So.
Is this the vehicle camera or the body worn camera?
Vehicle camera. And all of these come in HD and sometimes we run them on SD versus, versus HD just because of storage. So that's, that's the capital project for a hundred and twenty thousand for the, the complete replacement. And, and on the backend, you, you may look at it as a, can we do this partially? Can I do this, you know, do we have to do all this at once? And I looked at that and how do I partially do it? I tried to split it up in just the car cameras, but then I'm getting some body worn cameras. So I have two different camera systems. And then I have to keep that backend going for L3, which I'll have to do, or the system that we have now, I'll have to keep that going for the next probably year or so until we get those records come off the other end. Because we typically keep them for at least a minimum of two years, some of them. Some of them, we keep them for the lifetime of whoever we've either incarcerated or if it's an unsolved homicide, the statute of limitations on that.
Can we back up just a second?
Yep.
I had a question on, on your vehicles, on your fleet. Are there any incentives out there for buying vehicles that run on ethanol or anything like that that you know of?
I thought there would be, like when I talked about the hybrid vehicle.
Yeah.
And, and then when the expenses come in, there was no incentives offered on those, like, cause it was a, a hybrid and supposed to run on electric, you know, when it was idle speed for cost savings on gas and, and energy. But the price was, like I said, it was right around thirty-five, almost thirty-six thousand dollars for those vehicles. And I could buy the same vehicle with a gas and engine in it for right around thirty-one, five. So, you know, I, I couldn't justify the expense.
Sure, fair enough. I just thought I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, but I do, I do look for that, but it's just not, they don't offer it.
And Chief, the new system says it'd be user-friendly for various video evidence from like residential and business videos. So.
Yeah, that's.
It'd be easier to share the video you would collect, when you collect evidence from a business or a resident.
Thanks for bringing that up because I forgot. But it's one of the points that I put in there and specifically for, we'll get video from like either a, a ring camera or a doorbell camera or from a business. And they work on a different platform. And it's hard for us to, and we don't store it sometimes in the system we have. The system that, that we looked at will incorporate that right into the driver, everything that, that is able to view that video goes right into that system. And it's exported the same way. We don't have to burn a separate DVD or keep a separate DVD from that personal video that comes in.
That's awesome.
So, and, and I thought so also. I, and, cause we struggle with, we struggle a lot with trying to disseminate that information when we get it in, like the, the videos from a, from a, whether it's a convenience store or a grocery store or a house or however we get it in there. So they, they say that, and, and I, I found it hard to believe also, but I've talked to some other departments that have this company and they said, oh yeah, it works. So.
Okay.
It'll be a nice convenience.
Yeah.
I wanted to talk a little bit about violent crime and, yeah, before getting into talking about staffing levels. And, and we talked about this a little bit throughout the fall, the violent crime forum and things like that, that have come up because of the things that are going on. And I was curious to where this was gonna end this year. And some of the numbers that are here where we're at, this is the most significant one, the six homicides that have happened since January of, January one of nineteen until December thirty-first. But some of the other categories are lower, you know, some of them increased a little bit. The shots fired call is back up to where we were, you know, in fifteen and seventeen. The gun calls where someone actually sees someone or knows someone has a gun is sixty-three. So we're right in that range. And, and I talk about this because of the investigations that we do and the proposal that came out when we talked about the, the POP unit and what we do with the officers and the staff that we have and how it impacts some of these. You know, I think when you talk about homicides, we try to control that by, by trends and things that we do. And a lot of times it's, some of these are connected to other crimes, like narcotics, things that people get themselves involved in, that these happen. Some of them are just driven by, you know, someone not liking someone else. So I kinda put that in there just as an overall, so you had an opportunity to see how we came out the rest of this year. Staffing levels now, fiscal year nineteen, we was forty-five, forty-five. If I propose forty-seven sworn officers this year and one full-time evidence tech that I, that Jim had talked about and then I have kind of want to do. And, and when I talk about that, I knew the question would come up, what do we do with the extra personnel if I get them? Because that was, that's what was asked of me. Jim had alluded to the staffing proposal that was presented. And I've, I haven't really updated the numbers in it. I have in here, but not on the back of this. This is the staffing proposal that Chief Beard had brought to the council. And I know there's a lot of new council here from when he had presented this. So I've copied this off just so again, I have an idea of the thought that was put into it and why it was done that way. And like Jim said, we went from forty-three to forty-five three years ago, or from forty-three to forty-five three years ago. And each year I know Chief Beard asked for it the next year in, to the council. And it wasn't done. And then last year I had presented two positions. And again, it wasn't done. But this is the proposal that was originally put together from the crime task force or the, you know, the crime task force through the Greater Burlington Partnership. The last two pages are the old figures. And so I kinda went through and tried to redo those.
Thanks, Chief.
On this presentation. So if you're gonna disregard anything, it's the last two pages.
Thank you.
Like I said, the, the criminal activity task force was through the partnership that originally put together that document and the need for it, what happened and, and the, kinda the costs that are associated with it. And like I said, five or six, page five and six are outdated. And I have some figures that maybe are a little bit more current. This is the organizational chart that I've kind of incorporated into the, the proposal that's there for additional officers. And if you look, it's kinda the hierarchy, how it works, how the department's set up. And you'll see, I talked about the officers in training right now. I have five officers that are currently in the FTO program or in the, in the probationary status, the first year. These two are at the academy. These two are in the initial startup of the FTO program as they just graduated. He's about ready to get out. I've kinda color coordinated the, the organizational chart to show that he's due to get out of the program January nineteenth. So you'll see probationary officer Lathrup, he'll go over and probably fill this vacancy right here on that, on that squad or that shift. And then probationary officer Crabbe is in blue and Tornaro, they'll come out May twentieth or May of twenty twenty. And they'll fill the other two vacancies that are in blue. This one here. And then I'll be able to put somebody back into the general crim of CID, once that position gets filled there. Now keep in mind, they're getting out of the FTO program. So they're ready to go. I won't take them and fill this vacancy, but I'll take one of these other officers that are more seasoned and, and have the experience that's needed to go to the general crim as a detective. The other, the other positions that are in red, what, what I'm, what I'm proposing to do with those two officers, and I talked a little bit about this, is that narcotics task force, I have two officers, basically two and a half or two and a part of an officer. One of them's a deputy, one of them's my officer and one of them's from Henry County, the part-time. And the need is there for those investigations to continue and that personnel, the personnel that are needed in there. I know both Officer Pope and Deputy Plain on the investigation of the thing that we just did back in November, spent countless hours on that investigation and the work they put into that. Now when I say that they did that, they partnered with a lot of other people outside of our community to get that job done. But there's other things that happen day to day in the city that lose that attention, you know, that needs to happen day to day when it comes to the street level dealers or some other things that come in. Because it wasn't just that organization, that criminal organization that is selling narcotics in Burlington. There's others out there. And for us to keep. And for us to keep working on that, this position would be vital for us to have that extra person to continue to do that. Hand in hand with this is this problem oriented policing unit, that POP unit. Officer Reddick, since we lost the people that we did this summer, he filled some of this void down here with the Narcotics Task Force. But we found that since he filled that void a little bit with that, that the gun investigations that he was doing with the problem oriented policing unit where he would target basically who's who's going to get shot, what information do we have that someone's having trouble with someone else? Where do we, where do we put our attention to? What what area do we need to be in? Those are some of the focuses of that problem oriented policing unit. So if there's a problem out there in the community and we hear about it and the officers do hear information like this person is having trouble with this person and somebody's talking about shooting somebody, that's what they do. They go and and look into those incidents. And and typically it's going to involve, like I said, narcotics. And if there's a weapon involved, it becomes twice as dangerous. And we start seeing that number six on that homicide rate. So to try and curtail that, the other vacancy, I would probably keep this unit at a two and and make sure that that stays at a constant two. And it's impossible for me to bring somebody from here when I'm trying to keep a minimum strength of four and I'm down to a five or some of those squads worked with a four this summer through the attrition. And that happens. That happens because of the length of time it takes me to get someone hired to the academy. And I can't, I can't say it enough, and I know you've heard me talk about it. And it just takes me almost a year to get somebody back on the street. So and last year, when I talked to you, I was at a at a forty five personnel, sworn personnel last year. And I asked to be at the ability to over hire. And Jim's very gracious when I start talking about over hiring and and figuring it out and calculating it because he's very responsible for his budget and I understand that and don't want to over extend himself if someone doesn't leave or retire, and I understand that. But to have that shift strength to be or that sworn personnel strength to be at forty seven just so I can over hire, like I said, this year for most of the year, I I don't know if it's a month that I worked with forty five sworn officers for this year, this last year, two thousand and nineteen. So when I say I'm at forty five, usually I'm I'm working around that forty three, forty four because someone's leaving. This this proposed budget is proposed for two people leaving, two retirements. You know, you never know what's going to happen. You never know when someone's going to, you know, have something change in their life that they want to move on. So those are things that I can't predict and I can't figure into that budget. This is the expenses like I talked about. It's on the page five and six in there that you can kind of fill in and I kind of went through them and oops. I kind of went through them and talked about the hiring expenses, some of the things that we figure in, the physical. The MMPI is basically their psychological evaluation to make sure they're fit for the job. We do a polygraph and a background check. And a majority of this is this right here, the medical physicals that we have to do for the officers. I think it's around twelve, thirteen hundred dollars for us to do a a physical of that candidate. That's if they make it. That's the expense if they make it. If they don't make it through any one of these steps, we still have the expense if we send them to their physical and they don't make it through the rest of the process and then we're out. So we kind of, we kind of have it figured out, a pecking order, what can eliminate them? And then we hold this to the very last because it's the most expensive thing. You know, you have to get through an MMPI, you have to get through a polygraph and a background check before you even get to the physical. So we're trying to maintain that, I guess, that that expense. DALEA and training expense includes tuition meals, academy clothing. They they require clothing to run like PT or physical training up there, that it's a minimal expense. And then this FTO training wage, we pay our FTOs when they're in that training mode extra money for doing, being that training officer because there's some stress involved with that, trying to train someone day to day in that squad car rather than just going out. You know, as a police officer, you know what you're responsible for every day in that car personally. It's difficult when you're trying to train somebody and be responsible for them, kind of like a mini supervisor. You know, we know that supervisors typically get paid more to supervise people, so there's some extra pay there. Uniform clothing and equipment, the initial issue, body armor, gun, taser, body cam. The presentation I did for the the portion I did for the thirty body cameras, we'd have to, each person we add, we'd have to buy another body camera, which is about nine, nine hundred and ninety five dollars or a thousand dollars per body worn video camera. There's the big one up the top, the salary and benefits. Jim had eighty five thousand, ninety thousand is probably more towards the family plan in of insurance. And we don't know whether the person's going to come in single with a family, however it's going to happen. So there's somewhere between eighty five and ninety thousand. I went to the high side, their starting salary, health benefits and police pension puts them at that ticket price. I have added in here this squad car and equipment. And I put in there a potential need for one squad, squad car per two officers hired. Just as as the personnel strength gets higher, the need for to have those, to be able to send those officers out is there with an additional squad car. Right now you say, well, you have fourteen and you only, you know, you're only going to run six or seven officers. With that being said, there's times when we have vehicles that are down for maintenance or there's something wrong with a computer or we're changing out something on those. So there's times when, you know, we we have a need for those cars. But if there's anything, anything that's not part of that two hundred and seventy or that, I guess, that two hundred and sixty seven thousand or two hundred and seventy thousand, it would be that police car that we'd have to just make do if we had to man a car and send it out. So the estimated total for one officer without the squad car, I added that figure in there. And that's what I have come up with, a hundred, basically a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that's, that's the staff presentation. What if we if we increase it to two, what would I do with them? And this is the cost per officer. And you can just multiply that by two, three, four, five, ten. You know, if you want to hire ten, it's going to cost you, you know, probably a million dollars, you know, at at the very least. So there's a cost that comes with it and to pay, you know, everybody, I guess, shouldn't say everybody. Some people may say that, you know, that's a lot of money for them officers. But they also do put up with a lot and are putting a lot at risk when they go out there. So with that being said, is it worth it? Not. That that is a decision that needs to be made by the council. And like I said, I talked about this, costing concerns to consider. And I'm on the last couple of slides here, fiscal year twenty one. Like I said, there's two officers eligible for retirement. One of them can retire in August, one in September. So those are there. I planned for two new, two new hires and I talk about this and I added it in there just for a quick reference, the one year military deployment, you know, and and I had two that would have been deployed, but one of them resigned last summer that was part of that same military unit. But so that's something that I can't, I can't, I can plan for, but he'll be gone. So right away, when you talk about forty five, this next fiscal year, I'll have forty four for sure because he'll be gone. So those are things that I can't plan for a whole lot. The cost of hiring and training equipment officers to maintain current staffing level. And I talked about the time it takes me to train. Fleet rotation, I talked a little bit about that. When you talk about state bid, state bid price and the new admin and CID vehicles to delay replacement cost. And then the staffing proposal is there. And the need for the full time evidence tech, and I kind of left that to last. There's some work that's being done in there when Jim alluded to that in his presentation and I'll add on just a little bit. That person that I have in there started in August, I think August, September. And she's really up to speed and she's a great hire. And she has not come to me and asked me for a full time hour. She has not done that. But I had a conversation with her and I've had a conversation with previous evidence custodians about the work level that's in there. Right now it's twenty eight hours a week. And both of them have said, there's definitely forty hours worth of work in there in that evidence room. And when you, if you, if you have a question about what happens in there, I'd welcome you to come down and and just go through there and what what happens on a day to day basis when you talk about bringing property in and being responsible for someone else's property because it's not ours. Being responsible, accountable, and then the disposition of it in the end. Because it has to go somewhere, it's just not going to sit in there, you know, until the ends of the earth on some of these cases. Some of them we do keep forever, you know, until the person has either passed away in prison or if it's an unsolved homicide. I have a homicide in there from nineteen sixty nine that we still maintain the evidence on. It's an unsolved homicide here in town. And I know that it's been visited at least by myself and at least two or three other people, you know, over the course of the last thirty years. So that evidence is important to keep, it's important to have. We have to have, you know, people's property come in and people's property come out. And she's doing a very good job of keeping up with that and getting it checked in and getting it checked out. And she knows the process, so she's doing good with that. On other things, there's a, there's investigations that allow us to attempt to forfeit property, whether it's personal property or money. We've stripped that down to basically anymore. It's, you know, it's either cash, money or nothing because we don't try not to seize property that doesn't have a high cash value. When I talk about that, you all might remember a time when drug task forces were seizing vehicles and and houses and things like that. I've set the standard for seizing a vehicle a little bit higher, you know, probably over that five thousand dollar mark at least, and the vehicle has to be paid for. And then we have to show that directly that narcotics or drug money has has been used to purchase that. So that 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 has been set up a little bit so we're not getting those thousand dollar cars that sit around for months on end. And then what happens is the battery goes dead and mice get in it and things happen. And then we end up paying more for it than we would have ever got out of it. So when it comes to that, I don't do that. But the other ticket item is the is the cash and we will seize people's cash when it comes to people that deliver narcotics or we arrest for that, we will do that. On the flip side of that, we have to go through a forfeiture process. Some of that process had, we had difficulty with that for a four year period because there wasn't a lot of, a lot being done with it in the, in through the courts and through the county attorney's office. That's changed and there's an interest to do that, but the problem being is I don't have the time. And she don't have the time in the evidence room to work through the process to do that. She's taking property in and and putting property out and needs someone to oversee that and to do that. And it's, it's managed by the lieutenant that's in charge of the investigations division. So there's someone that's that's supervising that, but they need the personnel that needs to do the day to day things to get that stuff, I guess, cleaned out. And then when I, there's, there's funds in there now that need to be, need to have a disposition on it. They need to have a disposition, either it's given back to the owner that we took it from or the forfeiture needs to happen, the process needs to go through. So with that being said, that's the reason for this. And I put an estimated cost of what it's going to take to do that is fifty four thousand dollars in salary and benefits for that, for that position, not for the person that's in there because they didn't come and ask me. I'm looking at what what do we need to do?
Additional.
What's that?
Are you looking at additional person then?
No, I'm looking at full time.
Just moving him full time. That would be the full time figure.
Yeah, she would.
That's what I'm trying to do.
She would do it, but she didn't come to me. I guess my point being she didn't come to me and ask me, I need full time. That's not what has come, come to to this here. I'm looking at it as like this needs to be done. And right now we're at forty five officers. If we add two, it would, you know, multiply a little bit more because there's that much more coming in with property and things like that. So and like I said, you know, if you, if you want an idea of what's going on in that evidence room, you just come down and we'll get you, you know, in there to look and see the processes that she does. And she's very, she's very efficient. I can't say enough good things about her, a great hire, great find. Like I said, we're four months into it. You know, she's doing a fantastic job in there and it's not a job that everybody can do. I found that out because I've hired employees and I've let employees go because they can't, they can't catch on to what needs to be done. So that's my, I guess, my push for that position.
So you're saying it would be an additional fifty four K to make her full time?
That's, that's what I figured.
Not additional, it'd be a total, correct?
No.
Additional.
Yeah.
And what's she getting now?
Uh, she's right at that, I want to say. Yeah, I thought it was right around thirty, thirty thousand for part time wages.
So Chief, your, your proposed budget with the the two officers and the and the evidence tech, that's what's been submitted to Jim?
It had, what's been submitted to Jim is the the where we're at right now, status quo. Yeah, where, what you're seeing from him is status quo, it's not figured in. This would be those two extra positions and her full time.
So three hundred thousand.
Yep.
So I have a couple of questions for you. One, the biggest one is if we were to hire an additional officer, one, what impact do you feel that that would have on your overtime budget? And if we were to hire two, what impact do you feel that would have on your overtime budget?
That's a loaded question. I don't, and that's why I added in there that 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 conversation about, I, there's other things that I can't control that impact that overtime budget.
Fair enough. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm focused more on the the turnover part of it than I am the 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 crime part. And I understand if there's, and I hope that there's not, but if there's a dozen murders next year, then you have to be able to staff the 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 investigations for those, which is going to contribute to that overtime budget. But all things being equal, I guess, from a staffing turnover perspective, how much of an impact do you think those two officers or or one officer might have?
Uh, on, on, on the overtime budget?
Yeah.
Um, I think it could have some impact and and I say that because when, and hopefully you understand when I say that I'm, I have forty five personnel now, you know, that I can, I can have on staff. And this year, when I say I've only worked a short amount of time with forty five of those. So we're constantly working under that. And I, and I would offer this to you that if I was given forty seven sworn officers that probably throughout the year, you're probably only going to pay for forty five.
That's, and that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, that's why I'm asking.
I guess the majority of your overtime is dependent on the crimes that occur. The, the, the spot where you have the ability to have flexibility of an impact on overtime with additional staffing is if you're adding to your shifts.
Yes.
And it's then you have, when you have people who are absent from a shift and hitting minimum staffing levels where you're having to backfill, you're reducing the amount of those. When you're, when you're at six folks, you're in a, in a shift, you're not having a tremendous amount of that. And adding the position in the investigations and in your POP unit doesn't have a huge impact on that number. You can fill some shifts with them, but you're trying to stay away from doing that and keep them on their other stuff as well.
I would, but I refer back to.
You're already going to do that though with the, once you get all these guys through the academy, right?
Six guys coming online.
You're already going to move a guy into the POP and you're already going to move him in an investigation.
If you look at the, where his.
Two additional spots to supplement shifts, right?
His new positions that are the red, that he's proposing are the two red.
Right.
They're in the POP and investigations, they're not on your four squads, A B C D squads. Those are the ones that where having the additional officers helps you to avoid those. When you have sicknesses, avoid the overtime. You're going to be able to fill from those other places onto the the squad some, but you're, you're ideally, when you have a vacancy on A B C D, you're filling it with somebody from one of the other A B C Ds regardless.
Short term, yeah, if there's something that's long term, like, like you're talking about, like this, this past fall, I moved Jesse Hill from his position at the middle school back on a patrol to try to eliminate some of that overtime expense. I brought him back in because like I talked to you about, my primary concern is that patrol division. That is the primary response that I have, you know. I need to have the people available, the officers available for that initial response. Otherwise, I feel like I'm negligent. This here's an extra.
The officer who's going to be deployed, what, what position are they currently filling?
He's currently on night shifts, Officer Jacobson.
Okay. And another question, do we continue to pay their salary while they're deployed or is that?
There's a.
Yes.
Yeah.
The first thirty days?
Yeah.
Okay, so if somebody filled in for them, they would have a job when they come back, obviously, right? And they're gone a year?
Yeah, that's what it's initially said to be, yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes, well, you know, the military as well as I do, I, they'll change their mind and not tell anybody.
Well.
So.
Hopefully they don't, we have to answer to families and other things. But yeah, it happens that sometimes they'd extended deployment. So we're looking at someone being gone for a year, starting when?
Uh, it's supposed to be April at the latest. Uh, it's supposed to be April, the latest I've heard is May.
Okay.
I haven't got, I haven't received his orders yet, his official orders yet.
I, I've heard rumors too, so, uh, what unit, you know?
I don't know where he's out, I believe it's out of the Quad Cities.
Okay.
So Chief, just a quick question, um, so you said you got two guys that are up for retirement in twenty-one, right? And if I remember the retirement schedule, you've got two more right after that, don't you?
Uh, probably, yeah.
So I mean, if we looked out over the next five years, um, how many guys do you, do you, would, would be a reasonable guess for the number of? Uh, people who are eligible to retire, obviously, we don't know if they're going to, but.
Over the next five years? I'd say it's probably going to be, I'm missing one there. It's probably going to be in that six or seven range over the next five years for sure.
And do you feel like, do you feel like if we were to add, I don't, I mean, I'm looking at the budget, we'd have to figure this out if we can even afford it. But if we added one this year, just because of the constraints, if we were able to find the funds for that. Then we would look next year what a budget would look like, and maybe add an additional one. Do you, do you feel like bringing those two officers in would alleviate the stress of the, that turnover? Enough where you're not falling back into thirty-nine or forty-one, that, that, that low, low number? Because right now, you said you were down six at one point. Do you feel like if we did that, it would alleviate that stress enough that it has an impact?
It wouldn't uh, I would be able to absorb it better is, is the way that I would uh, term it, you know? And it wouldn't cause a disruption like in the, whether it's the school resource, officer program. And right now, I have three detectives in there, and I moved one out just to cover, and he's right there, Officer Tripp, I moved him out of investigations. You know, uh, to put him back on patrol, just to cover some and relieve some of that uh, man, or shift strength down here. So uh, I'm working with three investigators, and, and they don't complain, but just to absorb it better, yes, I would be able to absorb that. If someone left prematurely and then start looking at uh, hiring another officer in that next, you know, and get them up to strength in nine months. I understand we have to pay them from day one, but to me, there's uh, I, I get very little out of them during that time, during that training period.
And you don't want to try to replace a bunch at once.
No.
That'd be.
I remember doing six at once, six and one hiring in my career.
Chief, this isn't a, your dream department, correct? If you had all the money in the world, you would be asking for a lot more, correct?
Well, if I had, yeah, for sure. I mean, there's, there's other things that I can do and, and be uh, a lot more proactive to have that luxury, you know?
And you keep saying, you know, if we hire, if you hire two more, the evidence person's going to need to be full time because there's going to be more evidence collected?
That's part of it, yes.
So that means we have more crime in the city that is going, that we can't, you know, that, that we're not catching right now.
Yes.
Possibly.
Do other communities our size have a full size evidence tech?
Yes. Some of them have too, they have somebody that goes out and does, does their crime scenes also. And, and has the ability to send them to the crime scene school and use them to, to process crime scenes. And when I say crime scenes, I probably wouldn't use that person to do like a major crime homicides, but for like a burglary investigation or things like that. You know, I would, I would utilize them to go do that and document the crime scene.
Some of that information is time sensitive, isn't it? Some of that evidence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, to have it available and have that information available for prosecution and for the defense, yes.
Do you know if the sheriff, sheriff's department has their own um, person for that?
They have a part time uh, evidence.
Okay.
Tech, I think, or, because specialists they call them.
And would it, I'm just throwing a curve ball here, would it be possible to share that resource or to have some, some?
Two different, two different systems that we operate under, and I don't.
Especially being in two different buildings, that would make it almost impossible.
Okay.
But I mean, we do, we do cooperate with them when it comes to processes, things they're doing, you know, and, and share some of that information. But as far as them coming over and working part time, I don't know how logistically that would work.
Okay.
The number six for the homicide, is that like a record for Burlington?
I don't, I don't believe so, in the recent past, it's the highest that I've seen.
I mean, the last twenty, thirty years?
I don't know that I've seen that, that number six in the last twenty, thirty years, but I hear people talking about in the seventies, that it was definitely higher than that.
The eighties were the wild, wild west.
Well, that's the seventies, we all know about the seventies, well, I don't know about the seventies.
And that's just rumors, I was, I was in grade school and middle school in the seventies, so.
Does, uh, does anybody else have questions for the chief, any comments?
We should be asking. Thank you, thank you.
Very informative.
You know, I, I think, Chief, I'm just going to be, I'm going to be, try to be honest, kind of front where I'm at on these things throughout this process, you know? For me, you know, we got six coming online, which is hu- huge help. We might have, on my opinion, we might have to hold a line, you know, I, it's going to depend what everybody else presents and asks for. But it's definitely in our consideration for me, so.
Well, and I, I appreciate that, and I just want to tell you as the council and everyone that's in here, this is something that was uh, uh, brought up. Through uh, the community, some of the community leaders, and it's not me sitting in my office dreaming it up.
I, I definitely realize, if we had the money, you'd have whatever you wanted.
And I, I, I do understand that, I do understand that, you know, and that's, you know, if I, if I ask for ten officers, I think, you know, they'd probably. Want to send me somewhere else and get looked at, you know, so, uh, but I'm, I'm not doing, I try to keep it reasonable, you know, and uh.
It's, it's a reasonable request, I'm not saying, you know, definitely not saying that, I'm just saying the re- reality is we're going to have to look and see. But it's, it's something that, because of this last year, it's a hot button issue too.
It is. It is, but it was a.
Does give me some confidence with you got six that are coming online, where actually they're usable officers, uh, but I understand you have retirements and that type of thing coming too.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the way it's presented here, and I just, you know, we um, I've seen it from the start, you know, these, these six, you know? And, and going through, and I've seen what the other officers on the department are doing while these guys are training, you know? And, and the things that they do, and, and, and I'll take a minute just to brag about them because they, they do come in and backfill. They don't complain about, you know, uh, why do I have to come do this, I'm done, I'm tired, I'm not doing that. When, when those major crimes happen, those investigators get to work and, and it's on. So um, and I have some officers on the street right now that are doing some fantastic things, and, and one just happened last night. That, that uh, was a fantastic thing, and, and uh, they're doing that day in and day out, and some of those things you don't ever hear about. You know, and, and I can't say enough about them, they show up, they come and do their job, and they're excited to do it. And to get employees like that is uh, it's a, it's a luxury. It's a luxury in today's world, and, and they're willing to do it, and we look for those candidates. And you're right when I talk about the ones that are coming on, you know, they're wanting to come into a field that I started over thirty years ago, you know? And I can't fathom going back, you know, I, uh, it's gone fast, but you know, it's going to keep going, so, with or without me, and I understand that, so.
Well, you, you definitely, excuse me lady, you definitely have a great uh, department to be proud of, I think the whole city is proud of our, our police department. Now, one last thing, and I'll let you off the hook, so one of those retirements you're planning on in the next couple of years, it's not you, right?
I couldn't hear that question.
All right. Just trying to put a little, put a little expectation up there.
I had an observation that kind of stemmed when I went on the, the um, fire department run, a lot of the calls are mental illness related.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean that your staff needs more training in how to deal with mentally ill clients, or more training would be required, or it'd be a good idea?
Well, you'll see it in that staffing proposal that, that I handed out, they talked about uh, doing crisis intervention training. And just a, and I'll share a quick story and then I'll be done, but uh, we do have officers that are trained in crisis intervention, and they're trained to be trainers in that. Uh, so they can teach others to do that, and, and we've done some training a little bit with the fire department, and we do it with other departments. Uh, that need that training, that crisis intervention training, so when someone is uh, having one of those incidents, you know, we're capable of handling it. And we've done that, and uh, you know, we've done that suicidal subjects, we've done it with people and had interventions, uh, and stepped in. And, and I shared this in the staff meeting, there was an individual that was walking around shoeless and, and in the area, and it was cold out. And uh, some of the business owners came and contacted us, and, and we ended up getting, taking that opportunity to, to get with that. Courts and get her someplace where she could get some treatment, or at least get evaluated and get her off the streets, and make sure that she was in an environment that was safer for her. So those kind of things are happening uh, behind the scenes, and those, those trainings are there, so there is some extra cost with that, and it takes time. Um, the, the crisis intervention training is a scheduled forty hour class. Um, we're trying to, and we know, we know how budgets work with police departments, so other police departments really balk at that forty hour training class for that. It's an expense, and it's, and it's real, and so they want to water it down to like two days, and it's hard to do. And, and we try to accommodate that, uh, uh, but it's difficult, so there is an expense to answer your question.
I think it's important, because if you don't properly train your officers, then they're, they're going to leave.
Yeah.
So, do all we can to retain them.
With that statement right there, I want to jump in real quick and say where I'm at right now, is I would like to see us work to try and facilitate one additional officer. I'm not on board with the evidence tech yet, um, I think we, it's baby steps, especially with the budget situation being what it is this year, uh, as tight, as tight as it is. Um, and then working towards in next budget cycle, trying to add that additional one. Reason being, uh, exactly what you said a little while ago, is we have never been to the level of what we have authorized funding for. Um, and with the number of retirements coming up over the next several, several years, I'm going to assume. Um, that we're not going to continue to be at that level, at least for the next several budget cycles out. Um, also, what you just said is if we put a lot of strain on these guys, if, if we're constantly calling them in, if, if we're putting pressure on them. Then we're going to see a lot of that turnover, which is what we've seen in the last eighteen months, and we've had several people decide to leave the profession entirely because of the strain. We've had several people move outside of the department into other departments, whether it's for family or whatever reason. Um, and then I feel like the more strain that we're continuing to put on, we're going to continue to see that trend. I know what we've authorized, I, I think, kind of to what you were saying, overhiring to be able to absorb the impact of that, I think is going to be important. I don't know where we can find.
I don't know if I like the term overhiring, but planning in ahead.
That, that, and that's exactly what you're doing when you say that, is you're planning for the future, so that we don't get ourselves into a situation where, well, we were planning on two. But actually, we're now we're down six, and I've got guys working overtime uh, in order to, to make up that. So that's my position, whether or not we can get enough support up here in the council and, and find the funds. Uh, throughout the rest of the budget process to make that happen.
We're, we're going to have to face it eventually, regardless of what it sounds like.
Maybe, I mean, we could do nothing the next ten years, I mean, that, that's a possibility as well, but then we leave it up to the chief. Whether it's Chief Kramer or the next chief, or the chief after that, to, to uh, work within his department to make it happen. I don't, that's not the, the route that I would prefer to go, so.
Jim's probably cringing at trying to figure out how he's going to put that in the budget and that, but um, you know, he.
That's why he decided not to sit next to me tonight.
But I'm sure he'll do his best, so, but.
That's, that's my two cents, and, and I know Jim will give me the evil eye as we walk out of here.
Well, he's going to give me a worse eye, because I would go with yours at the minimum, and I would go with the two if we can afford it.
I, I just don't think we can, I don't think we can get to two, otherwise I'd have loved to have said, hey, here's two.
You're either looking at cuts somewhere else in some other department, or you're looking at an increase in your property tax levy.
But I think, I think.
I just don't know if there's, there's the will there to do that.
I think though, that, you know, the major uh, purpose of the city is to provide for public safety. So that's why I would, that's why I said what I said. But, we'll have to see.
In the most sense, we're all commenting, I'm, I'm in the middle of you two as well, I've, I've just, uh, I don't know where the money's going to come from. But um, I can anticipate the need in the future that we're going to have some retirees, we're going to be sure, I don't want to lose people due to attrition. So, yeah, I'd, I'd like to at least see one. I, financially, I don't know if we're comfortable enough to do that, but um, you know, we do need community feedback, uh, you know? Public safety is a big thing, so, yeah, it's, it's not an easy decision either way. And I, I really believe in, in the police force, and I think you guys have done a, an awesome job, and I'm proud of the force as well, I'm proud of Burlington, so. Thank you, um, we'll do what we can.
Yeah, I'm on board for another officer as well, it breaks my heart when I hear people that don't reside in Burlington say, well, I can't go to Burlington and shop. And I say, well, why not, it's too dangerous, but that, that's their perception. We have to make sure that somehow we can do all we can in our power to change that perception.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure that hiring additional officers is going to have that much of an impact on the, on the, on the crime rate. I'm more concerned with the stress being put on the department as a whole.
Crime prevention, and that's harder than going out and answering a call, isn't it?
Jim, is it safe to assume that if we said, hey, we're going to fund forty-five officers this coming budget cycle, or, or let's use this budget year? We said we were going to fund forty-five, we actually only funded roughly maybe on average forty-two, depending on when somebody came or, or, or.
Yeah, I don't, you'd have to do the math on when.
I mean, so, so there were funds that we budgeted that didn't get spent for.
This last year, when, when you were short staff, uh, you, we actually put some, we, this last year, we put people in training. Before you were down at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of nineteen, yes.
So you had during that fiscal year, we, we knew that we were going to have to fill some of those positions, so we had a, a couple that we got into training. Before the positions that they were going to fill were empty, so we were double paying.
Yes.
When we, we did that as well as paid the training costs. So when you put, when you lose an officer, yes, that, then you're going to, if, if you weren't planning on it, because we did have some of those too. That we weren't able to get it done in advance, you'll have a gap between the time where they leave the force and you get the next person in. So we had somebody leave in June, we didn't get someone into training until they, we hired mid-August, and they went to. Academy the end of August, September.
Yep.
So you had a month and a half gap there, where you weren't paying anyone, but you, when the new person came on, you were not only paying them. But you were paying for them to be at academy, the academy costs. So, yeah, you have some gaps in, in employment where you save some funds, but you also have payouts. If it's a senior officer who has uh, any vacation or the sick time that they, that they get paid out, that, that has to be accounted for. And you have the training of that new person that.
Which, that's true, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, so yeah, you, you may save some, but you don't save, it's, you're not saving a huge amount.
Okay.
Um, this last year, we, we saved a significant amount in, in costs on, on personnel, but more of it was in Eric's department. Where we had positions that were open for over six months. In fact, you had two of your seven positions that were open for, in that six month timeframe, and then you weren't doing a training process where you're bringing someone up, up to speed.
Sure.
And that, and that makes sense, what, what he's talking about is when I, when I, you know, that, when they're at the academy, they're really not, they're not people that I can. You know, tap as a resource, so, and, and when you talked about it, it makes perfect sense to me, Jim, when you talk about, you know, some of the academy expenses. Is absorbed in that time when we don't have somebody there, you know, and you've seen the academy expense alone is, is about twelve grand. By the time we get the tuition, the meals and everything else with it, you know, and that training expense is, is about ten to twelve grand. So it's probably absorbed pretty quickly with that money, that savings.
But that transition period, that was also the period where you're seeing the most stress on the department, right? Because you can't tap those guys.
It's not bad if one leaves, you know?
One's fine, but we didn't have one, we have.
But when, uh, some of them, you know, like four leave, you know, or two leave, like within a short amount of time that you're not expecting, you're trying to plan for. Like he said, and we did plan for, um.
You had two retirements last year that we, we planned, and we had those planned for, and we filled them in advance. It was the ones that left the department on top of that.
There's no guarantee that. Thinking for next year, I mean, let's say the two people eligible for retirement do retire, and you're going to have one on deployment. And then you have one either transition to another department, or leave for a girlfriend, or a family member. I mean, now you've got a hit of four, I mean, you're going to feel the impact of four, we only planned for two, and then you're kind of back in the same boat you were in this year, so.
I don't have the crystal ball, I can't.
No, I don't either, but I'm just.
That's a difficult thing, and I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
From a planning point, um, that's why I kind of made this suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, I think we're done.